I'd like to call this meeting of the Zion City Council to order. Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Commissioner Taylor?
Here.
Commissioner Deteen?
Here.
Commissioner McKinney?
Here.
Mayor Hill?
Here. I'd like to ask Pastor Rojas to come forward and say a few words.
It's been. Father, we want to pray tonight for our city, for our city council, and for the decisions that are going to be made tonight. We come to you because we understand through your word that we, as believers, are to pray for our government. We are to pray for them because that way we can live peaceful lives. We also understand that government is an extension of your rule, and all authority is established by you. And, Lord, we pray for those who serve in many capacities in our city. We pray especially for those whose life are at risk all the time to protect us. We pray for the police officers. We pray for them, for their families. We pray also for the fire department, and, Lord, those who serve full-time governing. We also pray, Lord, for those who serve in other capacities. Lord, we pray that the council has always be integral in their decisions, that there is honesty and transparency. That's the desire for us, for our local government. Lord, we also pray for the decisions that are going to be made tonight. We pray for wisdom and direction. Lord, we know that there are many challenges that we face, and, Lord, there are many things that no government can solve, but, Lord, that's why we come to you. We want to do responsibly with the things that have been entrusted to us, and we want to do the best with them, but we want to bring to you those things that are beyond our abilities to solve. Lord, and that's changing people's hearts. Lord, we pray that you do that work in our city. And, Lord, we thank you once again for all your blessings. In Jesus' name, amen.
I hope you'll indulge me. I don't ordinarily do things like this, but I want to read something that was handed to me, and I may have a hard time getting through this. There's some things going on in my life, but I just want to share this. And if I can't do it, I'm going to hand it to Diane, and she's going to finish it. This is a blog, and the name of it is "This Life I Lived: Seen from One Man's Extraordinary Ordinary Life." And the title of it is undercover angels. And I think this speaks volumes about not just this individual, but I think a lot of people in our community. "This morning, Indiana and I walked from the hotel to the hospital to have breakfast with Joey in our room. Afterwards, when Indy started getting fussy and Joey needed to get some rest, I took Indy outside to walk around the park that's across from the hospital. I pushed her in her stroller, and we walked and walked, and I sang 'I Surrender All' to her while she enjoyed the morning breeze and talked to her hands. It was still early in the morning, so it was just us, no one else was around. As we rounded the far side of the park, we passed a small wooden building on the left, and I heard a voice say, 'Hello there.' I turned to the right and saw an older black man get out of a car that was parked on the street. He walked a little closer and stuck out his hand as he asked, 'Are you from out of town?' And I said, 'Sort of. My wife is in the hospit,' but before I could get the rest of the line out, he took my hand and said, 'I'm going to pray for you.'" And there on the sidewalk, this old man bowed his head and held my hands and prayed the sweetest, kindest prayer of healing for Joey and I. His beautiful prayer went on for about a minute or so, and I know I should have had my eyes closed, but I found myself staring at him as he prayed, wondering why he was here and why I was here, and what kind of guy this was that would stop a stranger and pray for him without even knowing his story. Then I noticed his eyes tearing up as he continued praying for complete and total healing for this man's wife and peace for him and his child. When he finished, we both said amen. I think I was still staring at him. He smiled as he looked up at me. I thanked him for the prayer and asked him his name. He pointed to the little concession stand building and said, 'I'm Willie, and this is my place.' Then he leaned in a little and said, 'Want to know a secret?' And I said, 'Sure.' And Willie said, 'It might look like I sell snow cones, but that's just the cover. This is what I really do. I encourage people. That's what God has me here for.'" I couldn't help but smile back as I said, 'Are you here getting ready to open?' He shook his head and said, 'That's the funny thing. I don't know, but for a couple hours. God told me to get in my car and drive here early this morning, and now I know why. I'm here to pray for you and your wife.'" Then, with big tears in his eyes, he put his arms around me and gave me a huge hug. I thanked him again as he walked away. He kept encouraging me that God has this, and where two or more are gathered, he is there too, and even let out a little 'Woo-ha!'[368.28][368.28](Laughter). He was so excited, he was almost dancing as he walked, excited about getting to work early today, excited about getting the chance to pray with me, and even more excited about his real job of loving unsuspecting customers. Did I mention this place is special? It is, and that's just across the pond in the park. Wait until you stroll down the hallways of the hospital. The people that work there might have surgical robes and scrubs on, but I'm pretty sure, like Willie, they're all actually undercover angels.[396.78][396.78](Applause). And I just think that there are a lot of people in our community that are a lot like Willie. If you know Willie, you get the 'wahoo' thing, so... Anyway, please stand and join in by the lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four is agenda changes. Any agenda changes? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as it stands?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Item number five is a public hearing regarding the appropriation ordinance that is on the agenda to be passed tonight, and I would open the public hearing at this point and ask Director Naval to explain what the appropriation ordinance is about.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Every year, we're required to adopt an appropriation ordinance, which basically just appropriates all funds necessary to operate the city. It covers all funds of the city, not just the general funds, the water and sewer, all the special revenue funds, everything of that nature. So basically, this is the authorization that we have and what we publish, saying that this is what we can spend up to. We passed the budget at the last council meeting, which is our operational budget, which is more restrictive than the appropriation ordinance, because the appropriation ordinance builds into it emergency needs should something unforeseen happen, that we have to have additional emergency response over time, things like that, and kind of freak circumstance, but we don't want to get caught not being able to cover those emergency needs due to illegal complication of not appropriating the funds. So what we have for us is an appropriation ordinance for the total of $43,824,711, and I would request that we adopt that when we get to the item on the agenda.
Does anyone have any comments? Thank you, Commissioners. I hereby close the public hearing. Next item on the agenda is citizens' comments, and there are no citizen comments. Item seven is a consent agenda. Clerk, please read the consent agenda.
Approval of minutes of a regular meeting held on July 7, 2015, at 7:03 p.m. Approval but not release, closed session minutes of a meeting held on July 7, 2015, at 8:50 p.m. Bills vouchers 1-2-1-3-6-1 through 1-2-1-4-4-3 drawn on First Merritt Bank, total $178,057.
Make the motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
A motion and a second. Discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Item eight is consider passing resolutions as follows. Date A is amend personnel authorization in the Building Department for Director Ians.
Thank you, Your Honor Commissioners. With the recent approval of the Rental Housing Inspection Certification Ordinance, I'm requesting to amend the personnel authorization for the Building Department. The amendment would include adding two more full-time inspectors and one full-time administrative secretary, thus eliminating the part-time administrative secretary position.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
A motion?
Second.
And a second. Discussion?
I don't mind approving this ordinance to add personnel, but I think later on we are going to actually add personnel. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I'm just a little concerned about that. I think we can go ahead and approve this, but I'm going to have some comments when we get to the actual hiring.
Okay.
That's my comment.
Further discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Item number nine is consider passing ordinances as follows. Making appropriations for the City of Zion fiscal year beginning May 1, 2015, and ending April 30, 2016, for Director Naval.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. As mentioned in the public hearing, you have the ordinance in front of you. I won't read through every one of the 21 pages, but staff would recommend adoption of the ordinance as presented.
Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
A motion?
Second.
Second.
And a second. Discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Item 9B is amending section 62-403 of the Zion Municipal Code concerning chronic nuisance abatement for Director Ians.
Thank you, Your Honor. Currently, the ordinance reads that the Police Department responds to any real property at least three times in any consecutive 90-day period. Staff is recommending we amend section 62-403A, chronic nuisance property abatement, from 90 days to 180 days. Under the direction of the Police Chief, the Building Department staff is going to assist the Police Department. Police Chief or his designee will contact the Building Department when there's a nuisance activity on a property. The Building Department staff will keep an active record of all incidents of alleged nuisance activity. After two or more nuisances activities have occurred, the Building Department staff will then send out a notice to the property owner and notify the Police Chief. Police Chief will review the nuisance activities and determine if further action is required.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
A motion?
Second.
And a second. Discussion?
So basically, the only change we're making is the number of days from 90 days to 180 days. Is that the only change that's being made?
That's correct.
Okay. I think it's a good change.
Further discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Item 9C, amending section 2-44 (for) parentheses, order of business for the council, citizens' comments of the Zion Municipal Code for Mayor Hill. You have in front of you a change to the ordinance. We, a few meetings back, there was some discussion about citizen comments, and we had our attorneys look at what our present ordinance says about citizen comments, and what they actually found out is that we have one section in there that is we shouldn't have been doing, and that is under section 4A1, small 2. It says, "Public comments and participation on non-agenda items. Individuals designed to address the city council regarding a non-agenda item for which a resolution has been requested shall have first made every attempt to resolve the matter with the respective department head and/or city commissioner. If no acceptable resolution is reached, then the matter may be discussed under the agenda heading of citizens' comments." That is being deleted from our present ordinance, and anybody wishing to make a presentation or have a question or bring an issue to the city council does not have to go to the department heads or the commissioner responsible for that area first. They may come directly to the city council and ask their question at the podium. You may not get an answer that night, but that is your right, and that's what the ordinance will read for the future. So that's being deleted from the present ordinance. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there any discussion?
I think, yeah, we should delete that section. I wonder, since we are making a change to this ordinance, I don't know if it's possible, but there was, at least I heard some feedback from citizens, that those that wish to have signs at a city council meeting, we ought to designate a spot in the council chambers for people that want to hold up signs, instead of like somebody in the front row holding a sign up. It might block the view of others behind them. Can we do that now, or is that something we would do in the future? I think it's a good idea to have a designated spot in the council chamber.
It's my understanding that we cannot do that, that if someone wants to have a sign, they can have the sign where it is. However, I would just go to section 5 in here, and it says decorum, or it says, "Members of the public shall not make inappropriate or offensive comments at city council meetings or expect to comply with the rules. All comments must be civil in nature. Any person who engages in threatening, slanderous, or disorderly behavior when addressing the city council shall be deemed out of order by the presiding officer, and his or her time to address the council, and said council meeting shall end. An individual who violates these rules will be removed from the meeting at the address of the presiding officer." And I think that, it's my understanding, that applies not only to the person who is addressing the council, but anybody in the audience.
So someone who is blocking the view of someone behind them could be considered out of order?
It could be considered disorderly. And I also think that someone who is making derogatory comments under their breath that we don't hear, but the audience hears, and if we do hear it, that that can be considered disorderly also. Okay. Do we have a motion?
Yes, in a second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Is there a further discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Item 9D is repealing and replacing ordinance 13-0-36 regarding video gaming for Mayor Hill. You have an ordinance in front of you that repeals the original ordinance that was passed in, I know it's July 2 of 2013, and we had discussion about this at the last council meeting, and this is actually ordinance that follows through on the discussion that we had at the last council meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
You have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there further discussion?
I have a few comments. Perhaps maybe one of the commissioners would change their mind on this and change their vote, but maybe not. I just read in today's paper, there was an article on gambling. I don't know if you saw it, but the state also has a role in licensing video gambling. And I just wonder, Mayor, is that a competing role with us? If the state approves a video gambling license, do we then also have to approve it? Or can we, if the state approves it, can we reject that license? We don't want that particular establishment coming.
No. The only thing that we could, the only power that the city has is, we have two powers. One is to either prohibit or allow. I guess it's three powers. And the other one is that we can charge a fee of $25 per machine. The state of Illinois does all the licensing. The rules, as I understand them, are that the places that are going to have video gaming have to have alcohol, and they have to serve and consume the alcohol on premises. It can't be at a package store or anything like that, but it has to be served on premises.
The state is not requiring people to drink at these establishments?
No, they're not.
Good. At least they're not doing that.
They're not requiring that.
Okay.[1223.58][1223.58](Laughter). That was a joke. Well, I'm still not in favor of this ordinance, and like I said, if there's any commissioner that cares to change their mind on this, feel free to do so.
Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
No.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
No.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Item 10 is discussion and authorization or approval. Request permission to fill two full-time inspector and one full-time administrative secretary vacancy in the Building Department for Director Ians.
Thank you, Your Honor. With the approval of amended changes to the Building Department personnel authorization, I request the city council approval to fill the vacant position of two full-time inspectors and one full-time administrative secretary.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Discussion?
Yeah, Mayor, the comments that I have about that, I agree with the whole process, and I think it's something that's necessary for the city. What concerns me is I don't know what the fee structure is going to be for these permits, and I'd really like to have that knowledge before making a vote on this ordinance, because I think it's important that the fees will cover the cost of these new hires. And unless there's that assurance, or that could be somehow written into the ordinance that the fees received from these permits will cover the cost, because I don't want to add to our budget. I don't want to add to our levy, so I'd just like us to consider that.
I can assure you after, I mean, Director Ians and I have been talking about this ordinance for probably a year and a half, and I can assure you that the fees will be set to cover the cost of operating the program. However, I will be sure everybody understands that there are going to be upfront costs before we start collecting fees, because we have to hire people, we have to buy equipment, we have to get everything registered, and get all these departments registered before we're actually going to start instituting the fees. My guess is, if I remember correctly, and I think there may be some changes to the total cost, because the Police Department has some equipment that the Building Department will be able to use, so it should lower the cost on some of this. But I believe the original fee was about $138 per inspection for the first year, and then $100 per inspection after that. And that will cover, I believe we're going to do 4,800, we anticipate doing 4,800 inspections over a two-year period with four inspectors. There are 4,800 rental units in the community right now, which is, I believe, it's about 60% of our total units are rental units.
I noticed in that plan, I noticed that there was a way to get a temporary certificate prior to an inspection, because if there's a backlog, is it possible to front-end those temporary certificates? Because if it's going to take several years to do all these inspections, then we're going to be waiting all that time for this revenue to come into the city, so that we can grant a certificate and then do the inspection, and then we'll have the funds into the city, then we can actually hire without affecting our budget. Is that possible?
I didn't hear the whole question. Sorry.
It seems to me, within this plan, there's a way to grant certificates prior to an inspection.
Actually, I think that temporary certificate, if we do an inspection and we find minor violations, we'll allow them to go ahead and give them a temporary certificate, with the understanding they're going to correct those problems and we're going to come back and do a re-inspection.
Oh, all right. So there has to be an inspection, and if there's minor violations, you grant a certificate. And is that the only time we can collect a fee, is when?
When the inspection is set.
We've done the inspection?
Yes.
I just think there's going to be a cash flow problem, and if we're looking at a fiscal year 2017 budget that will likely have to be reduced, and then we're asking all of our other departments to cut their budgets, I'm not sure that's the right move to make.
Good point.
I mean, maybe we should just table this until we have the fee structure in place and we can be assured that the fees are going to cover it. And I'm not against the program at all.
How does that work with it? Is there? Do you want to make that motion? Because we have a motion and a second on the ordinance. Do we have a motion and a second?
Yes.
Yes, we have a motion and a second already. So if we make a table motion, is that override the original motion?
Commissioner McKinney?
Commissioner McKinney made the first motion.
Are you withdrawing your motion?
I think it makes sense to table it.
Okay, so you'll withdraw the motion?
Yes, I think it makes sense to table it for further discussion, yes.
Okay. The motion and second, if that were drawn, and Commissioner McDowell made a motion to table this item until the August 4th meeting? Will that give Director Ians?
Yeah, I'll do it. I think this is something that Director Ians and Director Naval are going to have to work out.
Or till such a time that the fee structure can be determined and we can see that the fees collected will cover the cost of the program. I know that's the intent.
Yes, and the intent of bringing this today was it's going to take us a while to hire people, and we want to get this rolling before, but you're right, you need to be sure it's covered. We have a motion to table.
To the August 14th.
To the August 4th.
Second.
And a second. Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Item 10B is consider entering into a license agreement with Market Square Hospitality LLC for 2723 Sheridan Road for the use of right-of-way effective July 1, 2015, through June 30, 2016, for Director Ians.
Thank you, Your Honor. Market Square Hospitality LLC, owners of Cali and the Square, are requesting a license agreement for the use of the right-of-way in the public sidewalk located 2723 Sheridan Road. License agreement be for the purpose of an outdoor cafe. Also, there's attached certificate of insurance, shows expiration date of 7/24/2015. I talked to the insurance agent, and he's going to give me an updated certificate dated the 25th, so we got another year.
If you'll recall, we had this license agreement, this is the second one. We had one last year that was with John and Janet Jones, and they're no longer, it's my understanding, they're no longer involved with Cali's, and so this is with Market Square Hospitality LLC. Is there a motion?
I have a question first.
Okay.
I don't even know if it's legal. Can we do that on a state highway? I'm considered concerned about people even sitting on, I don't want to see these people deprived of business or anything like that, but this is not a normal highway where you have something like that, where tables are sitting on. These cars go by, the Police Department can tell you what the traffic flow is and how fast the cars go by, and I'm a little concerned about that. And I really, I don't want to put the clamps on them, but us getting into agreement with them, if something happens, that makes us legal, that are viable, doesn't it? And I feel that before we do this, we should at least have the Police Department make a recommendation on what they feel that should be done. See for review of that.
I'll defer to our attorney in that question.
Well, the license agreement calls for the insurance, making sure that they have the insurance, but I can't speak for Chief Dumian in regards to the public safety issue.
To be honest with you, I haven't given much thought to whether that would be a safety concern.
To be honest with you, I haven't given much thought whether that would be a safety concern. Traffic flows on Sheridan Road are pretty much the same rate that it does through the rest of the community.
Do they have a temporary permit to do this already? Because they are doing it already.
Yes, they had a permit that was there from last year with John and Janet.
Okay, so this is a renewal of the permit?
This is renewal of the permit.
So what's been the experience over the last year? In fact, the traffic flow, have any incidents?
We've had no incidents, but as Commissioner Deteen brings up, I couldn't advise whether or not we have authorities since that is a state highway.
Is that city right-of-way?
Yeah.
Is that city right-of-way?
No, it's not.
It's not?
No, the ordinance is fine. The way it reads what it is, it's a description of the use on Exhibit A. If this were along 28th Street, past the IDOT right-of-way setback, you could easily approve it. But because the ordinance says that we own the right-of-way adjacent to the hotel, which we do, but only on a 28th Street side. So when you get to Exhibit A, where it's describing the footage off the curb line and off the building line, what it describes is not owned by the city. And I don't, I know it's done in other communities, but I don't know the process of how they are awarded.
So moving it to the 28th Street side would be?
It was on the 28th Street side, this ordinance. If Exhibit A described 28th Street footage, it'd be perfectly fine. But you can't, but it's in, the description of property is in conflict of what the ordinance says. Ordinance said to be owned if you don't.
So if they wanted a permit to have it on Sheridan Road, that would require permission from the state?
We'd have to research that to see what requirements they have. And it may just be that they want to be additionally insured, I don't know.
But that would be between Market Square Hospitality and the state of Illinois, and not above us?
Correct.
I believe there's a representative here. Karen, do you want, I mean, do you want us to?
I guess one of my questions would be, what's the difference between the park benches the city has on the city sidewalks and what we have, which is right next to the building, which is further away from the street?
I'm not the city attorney, but I would have to guess that we maintain that. The city has a maintenance agreement for Sheridan Road, so we maintain that. That would have been approved by IDOT at the time the streetscape went in. So I'm sure that's the reason why we're allowed to have receptacles of decorative lighting and park benches there. I don't want to be a bad guy either, but this, you're turning this over to a private entity to take responsibility, not the city.
Yeah, I'm guessing, what I'm hearing, you see, and I'm assuming that there is an agreement between the city and the state to have those benches out there. And that, I guess, you would have to have an agreement with the state to have them on the Sheridan Road side. Is what I'm hearing. Do you want it for the 28th Street side?
That's away from the actual restaurant, so I don't know that. I just, I would have to find out what they would like to do as far as the 28th side. I don't think that that's really what we're looking for. Because there's, you've got the circle part there, which puts you out further onto the sidewalk, or back in the areas where you've got the door coming into the side of a hotel plus water flosses and things like that. So I'm not sure that the 28th side would be a suitable place to sit.
If I recall correctly, wasn't there a request? We gave this license or right-of-way a year ago. And then wasn't there a request to have tables and chairs put on the 28th Street side? And we said, that's not in the agreement?
I don't recall that.
Yeah, I don't recall it, to be honest with you.
Are you saying that this description, Section 22, Block 21, 22, Block 73, that's a description of 28th Street?
What, no, what I'm saying is Exhibit A, where it says a portion of the right-of-way, seven feet, four inches of Sheridan Road edge of pavement, south 47 feet of building line, north 166 feet of the building line, enjoying the property. That's describing where, pretty much where the tables are right now, in front.
That's a storefront with the setback from the curb line.
Right. If that read differently, and the footage measured up to 28th Street side, there'd be no problem with this.
Oh, I see.
We are communicating with IDOT. We tried to correspond with them again today, because we were putting in a feasibility request to have the speed limit lowered for downtown because of all the traffic. And we discussed this, you and myself, about getting a letter of endorsement, which we told, we tried to get one from the hospital because the increased pedestrian traffic that we're going to experience there, all along there. So we can also find out what the parameters are for this, because I'm assuming the same individual would have the answer for this scenario as well. I know it sounds fickle, because I agree with Sharon. I mean, you could go in there and buy a sandwich to go sit on our park bench, but you can't go buy a sandwich, the liability changes, because it's not ours to maintain.
Well, the liability issues that Commissioner Deteen brought up are addressed in the license agreement in terms of indemnification and the insurance. But I can't speak for IDOT until Director Colangelo can get a little more light on it. I suggest that we just continue this until we get a little more information.
What are they supposed to do with the tables and chairs that are out there right now?
Well, right now, they don't have a license agreement with the city. So, and we don't even know based upon what Director Colangelo addressed in terms of it not being city-owned.
We're not here to enforce it.
Right, I'm just saying, right now, we don't have a license agreement.
It's not our job to.
So, until this is passed. And right now, it doesn't seem like we have enough information.
Okay, so let me be sure I understand what you just said. Is that if they chose to leave the tables and chairs out there, it's not our business? Because we're not permitting them to do it. And that's between the hotel and IDOT. And if somebody gets hurt, that's.
IDOT paid a visit there, were they okay the signs and the crosswalk? And I'm assuming they were there at the time. They were out at that time, too.
Yeah, I'm just saying that.
So they don't even care.
That's, if they leave the tables and chairs out there, it's not on our right-of-way, so it's.
It's not our concern?
Would we be liable?
I don't know if it's our concern. Is it our concern?
Who maintains it, the city?
We main, there's a description in the contract of what we maintain. And it's basically the cleaning of the storm sewers, picking up the garbage, street sweeping, pot oil patching if needed, snow plowing. That's our description of our scope of what we have to maintain.
Nothing to do with the sidewalks?
No. In fact, when we, when the city removes the snow for the business order of business owners, we are actually doing that as courtesy. It's not a requirement, not by state law.
My pleasure, the council.
So it seems like it's not our concern, they have tables and chairs out there.
Well, I think we need to look into it a little bit more. So I would suggest that you continue for two weeks, until Director Colangelo can make contact with IDOT. To verify what we see with the case.
But that would not be us that investigates that. That would be the owners of the establishment that investigate that.
I think it's probably a good idea, too. Ron?
What, I can't hear you.
I think I know, you weren't supposed to.
Right, we're just saying that perhaps you can gather some information on this and let us know, understanding that you're not here to enforce it. But if you can gather the information on what's what with that square footage, and who has to grant permission, and who has to enforce all the parameters on this. I guess we're kind of a day late, an hour short on this with the.
Be more than happy to do it for them. Just be aware of the state agency, they're not the fastest to respond or get that.
Do we need a motion in this?
Is the motion to table this until we bring it back?
Is there a motion?
I move that we table it, double it, double it.
A motion?
Second.
And a second. Further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 10C is consider accepting donation of property located at 10021 West Winthrop Court for Director Iansson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Lakeview Church owns a property located at 10021 West Winthrop Court in Zion. Recently, the church was attempting to sell the property with the impression that it was landlocked. Though the alleyway has been vacant, the property is not landlocked. If the property was to be developed in the future, the owner would be responsible for extending Winthrop Court to gain access. The estimated cost for extending water sewer and the extension of the road is approximately $250,000. Church has also applied for tax exempt status for the property and was denied because the property in question does not serve a use of the principal property. Church officials contacted surrounding property owners to see if there's any interest of the use of the property, and it was of no avail. The church is requesting the council consider to accept the property as a donation to the city. The church is current on this 2014 property text.
Is there a motion?
Will we accept the donation?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I would be opposed to it, for the reason that, for developing it, we're just talking about issues in terms of budget, trying to improve the city. And now we'd have another property that the department would have to take care of. And right now, we're short-staffed as it is. Director Iansson can talk more to that issue. But we're talking about if we're going to develop that $250,000, that's another big budget issue that's probably less than what we're talking about in terms of, for the rental certification inspection program. And there's no revenue would be coming out of that property based on its location. So I would be opposed to taking on another city property that would be difficult to sell. We have six right now that I think at some point, we're going to try to market. But I would, I'd be opposed to it.
So our obligation would be to mow it until we could, I mean, what else would we do with it?
No, it'd be maintenance of the property, just mowing it, basically.
Taxing.
We don't pay taxes?
The property will become tax exempt if the city were to acquire it. Right now, there, it is not. It is not.
No, the property is not tax exempt now.
Okay, they were denied tax exemption.
I guess my, I don't see, I tend to agree with Commissioner McKinney. I don't see any advantage to the city of accepting the property other than a liability in having to maintain it and just trying to sell. I just, I don't see any reason for us to take it, so I'll probably oppose it. Further discussion? So the motion is to accept the property. Clerk, so a positive vote, a yes vote would be that we do accept the property, and no vote would be that we would not accept the property. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
No.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Pardon me?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
No.
Mayor Hill?
No.
Motion fails.
Motion fails. Item 10D, tabulation of bids, demolition of five residential structures for Director Iansson.
Thank you, Your Honor. List of below are the fit results for the demolition of 2408 Elysha, 1529 33rd Street, 2811 Esco, 1424 Carmel, and 2617 Ewell. Peterson Escavating, $114,800. Lake County Grading Company, $118,680. DK Contractors, Inc., $148,000. Seaport Construction, Inc., $150,000. Campanella &amp; Sons, Inc., $159,125. Staff is recommending the lowest responsible bidder, Peterson Escavating, for $114,800.
Director Iansson, would you just give a little history on how many houses have been torn down and where we're getting the money?
This is part of a grant that we received a year ago. It's a 50% match grant. We've previously taken down five houses already. This would be additional five we're taking down. It's a 50% match, so we approved that about a year ago also, to match the grant.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 10E, request permission to pay invoice from Campanella &amp; Sons of Wadsworth, Illinois for an emergency sewer repair at 30th Street and Gilead, per Director Colangelo.
Thank you, Your Honor. In your package of invoice, we received sewer repair at 30th Street and Gilead Avenue. Sewer line and manhole at this area suffered a collapse, created a large sinkhole on 30th Street, making it unsafe for travel. Due to the size and depth of the excavation, outside contractors were needed to make the necessary repairs. Staff is requesting payment of the invoice from Campanella &amp; Sons of Wadsworth, Illinois in the amount of $10,455 in fourteen cents.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
A motion and a second. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 10F, consider approval of TIF 1 grant, Sunny Tile and Carpeting, for Director Naval.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. On June 8, 2015, Lance Sunny of Sunny Ambrose Tile approached the TIF board to present his plans to improve his building and expand his existing showroom. Based on the information that you have in front of you, that was also presented to the TIF board, the TIF board recommends entering into an agreement with Sunny Ambrose, or Sunny Tile and Carpeting, in the amount not to exceed $60,175. In terms of this agreement, our standard TIF agreement, where we have a 10-year forgivable period or clawback, that if the property is sold during that time, there's a transferee option in here, that if the new owner assumes the remaining amount to be forgiven, they can continue. The goal being that we don't improve properties in Zion for businesses to them, have them basically flip the property in new town. We want to make sure we encourage people who are invested here, or who are invested here and continue to want to do business here. So staff recommends approval of the grant that's presented.
Is there a motion? So move to approve. We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 10G, consider approval of memorandum of understanding between Midwestern Regional Medical Center and Zion Fire Rescue Department for the emergency transport of MRMC patients, per Chief Lewis.
Thank you, Your Honor. A little background for the new commissioners and the board. In light of MRMC state licensing, pre-hospital ambulances cannot transport to Midwestern's emergency room. Under the NYEMS Act, that, back in 2011, stemmed this MOU. Because of all the patients staying in the guest quarters, country and suites, and Market Square, they needed a way to get those stable patients calling 911 or needing transport to the hospital. So we came up with an agreement where we would respond, as usual, to one of those locations, assess the patient, if the patient's stable, we then treat them as a direct admit and take them up to the third floor over at CTCA. We initially started this back in 2011. The patients aren't billed for service. In turn, CTCA provides us with a $4,500 fee for the first zero, or basically zero to the first five patients. Any patient after the fifth, we get an additional $1,000 per patient. And that's in lieu of using our usual billing process. I approached them this year for an increase, and they agreed to increase for the first five patients $5,000, and each additional patient over five, an additional $1,200. The only other change they made to the MOU is changing the contract, which was a yearly contract, to the terms renewed for subsequent one-year terms unless either party provides a minimum 30 days' written notice to the other party prior to expiration date. And it shall remain enforced for one year, and therefore automatically renewed for successive one-year terms unless earlier terminated in accordance with the provisions therein. So I'm respectfully requesting approval of the attached MOU with the above changes.
Is outlined. I make a motion that we approve this service provider agreement as amended with MRMC.
Is there a motion?
Second.
And a second. Discussion? I have a question, Chief. If I read the, if I'm reading the last sentence, that I think I'm reading, is this a four-year contract?
Yeah, it's basically, it's a four-year contract. What we did before, it was a one-year contract, we just never went back every year to look at it. So it's still a one-year contract, it's good for four years, in the four years, we'll revisit again. But any time in between, either one of us can go back and terminate the contract and/or change the contract.
Okay. Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number 11 is departmental commentary, but there's one thing that I want to just try and let people know, is the, and Commissioners and anybody that's in the audience that might be interested in what's happening with approved gaming, and there has been, earlier in the evening, and there has been a request that's been brought up, that brought this whole thing to the forefront, for small parlors, and actually a new classification of a liquor license, so that the gaming would be allowed in cafe parlors. And the council has now approved the gaming in and of itself. What will happen now is that at some point, the location of parlors will have to go to the zoning board. The classification of a liquor license will have to go to the liquor commission. I would anticipate that both of those things will happen, hopefully, if we can arrange it. Director Iason and we're talking, and the chairperson of the zoning board is here, and we'll be talking with her. We hope to have something done by the, probably by the 17th. We have a short window. If we can't get it done by the next city council meeting, which is the 18th, it'll be then put back two more weeks. We hope that we can do something by the 17th with zoning. I'm confident that something can be done with the liquor commission before that time. Then both of those would come back to the city council for approval, both the zoning and the approval of that classification of the liquor license. Immediately after that, there would be applications accepted by the city for the people that want to open one of these parlors, and then there would be a selection of the licensees at the following liquor commission, and then those would all come back to the city council for approval. So there are a number of steps that have to be taken. I understand it must, it might be frustrating for the people that are anxious to get going, but it's just that we have to publish things in the paper, and it takes so many days before, and it just, it's going to take time, so I'm just trying to give you a heads up on what the timing will be. Is there any departmental commentary? Chief?
It's under announcements, but I'd just like to make a comment. On August 8, from 10 o'clock in the morning till 4:00 in the afternoon, we're hosting a blood drive in conjunction with LifeSource. Walk-ins are welcome. If you want to preregister and secure a spot, you can either call LifeSource at 877-543-3768, or go to their website, www.lifesource.org. Just use code 911C, and that registers you with our spot. So, the more the merrier.
Anything else? Item 12 is announcements, Thursday through September 24, 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Zion Farmers Market at Sheridan Road and Shiloh Boulevard. August 4, 7:00 p.m. is the Zion City Council meeting, and August 8 is the blood drive that the chief was just talking about. Item 13 is we have need for a closed session to discuss the purchase and sale of real estate and personnel, and when we come out of closed session, it is anticipated that there will be action taken on item number 14, which is considering entering into a sale agreement with NNT Family Restaurant, Inc., regarding 3077 Sheridan Road for Director Nabel. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
A motion.
A motion?
Second.
And a second. Discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. I, just for, if anybody's interested in staying, I wouldn't anticipate that this is going to be a too terribly long discussion.